Good evening and welcome to the May 19th, 2022 meeting of the Falmouth zoning Board of Appeals here at Falmouth Town Hall. Calling the meeting to order and ask everyone to please silence their cell phones. I'll introduce the board, starting at my far right. Your far left is Jerry Patonis, who is an associate member of the board. Followed by him is James Morse, who is a full voting member. To my right is Scott Zalinski, who's the vice chair. My name is TJ Hurry, I'm the chair of the board. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk, followed by Scott Peterson, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for the night. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant, from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments, and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant, or the applicant's representative, will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should be wait to be recognized by the chair and come to the podium. To the left here, we ask you to please state your name and address for the record. We do limit public comment to two minutes per person, and while you are up there at the podium, we ask you to please remain behind the podium and speak into the microphone. That microphone and these microphones up here are not for amplification purposes within the room, they're for the benefit of those watching at home on FCTV. The board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. On the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And regarding board discussions and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves, and a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. Such a motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions of special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment, no continuations. We do have two new hearings and a few items on our open meeting agenda. So first up for tonight is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if you're here to comment on something on a project, just wait for the appropriate evening, appropriate point in the evening. So is there anyone out there with anything for something that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, on to our new hearings. We have application 31-22, Darmel Corp., 424 East Falmouth Highway in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing dwelling and detached garage, construct three duplex buildings while maintaining the two commercial buildings and one mixed-use building.
So application number 31-22, Darmel Corp., P.O. Box 395, East Falmouth, Mass. Apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240 10.2A and 246.2 and 240 51A5 of the Code of Falmouth to remove the existing dwellings and detached garage, construct three duplex buildings while maintaining the two commercial buildings and one mixed-use building. Subject property is known as 424 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Conservation staff have no comments on the above project, it's outside Concom jurisdiction. From the engineering division. The application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Old Meeting House Road is a public right of way in this area. Alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to the closing of the hearing, or that the board include the following condition in the special permit if approved. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. East Falmouth Highway is a state right of way in this area. Any alterations within the right of way could require permission from Mass DOT. A copy of the plan was forwarded to the District Five Permits Engineer. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. The proposed roofs will be connected to leaching pits for infiltration as recommended. We also recommend that the following condition be added. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per subsection 991, a fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. We recommend the following condition also be included. Construction of the project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions, document which can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. From the health department. The applicant is proposing to expand the recently installed septic system, Leach Field, serving unit three. This is acceptable as long as all structures that are served by this septic system are on the same lot. Assessors have no comment. From Cahal at the water department. Town water currently serves all of the buildings on the site. The water mains and services are on the plans as required. Existing service to 15 Old Meeting House must be cut and shut off at the main. The units must have one service per unit, so it will require six and not three new connections. Three two-inch taps feeding one-inch service may be needed to meet town water standards if plans are changed and reviewed further by the Falmouth Water Department. Existing services to the other buildings on the site must be marked, protected, and not damaged during construction, provide continuous water service throughout the proposed work. From the planning board, the applicant was before the planning board for site plan review, and the attached decision from the planning board is in the file. And there were no letters of concerns in support or against.
All right, so for this project, you'll appoint Scott Peterson, a voting member, and for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth with Amen Clower Law Firm, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Darmel Corp., the owners of 424 East Falmouth Highway. I'm joined tonight by Deborah Drooly, who's the president of Darmel Corp., as well as her husband John Drooly and her son-in-law Brent Putnam. As you may remember, we were before this board in 2019 for a special permit in order to allow three residential units above the building that contains Bite on the Go, which is towards the front of the lot. At that time, we merged four separate lots into one parcel, which now constitute as a whole 424 East Falmouth Highway, which is shown on the site plans. This parcel is 1.8 acres, it's just about 79,400 square feet. Presently contains five buildings with a combined footprint of 14,000 square feet, which is 17.8% lot coverage by structure where 40 is allowed. These buildings include a long one-story commercial building along the easterly lot line, shown here as building one. That building is non-conforming to the side yard setback being 18 feet where 20 is required. There's a rectangular mixed-use building at the rear of the lot, which contains commercial space and one studio apartment. This building is non-conforming to side yard and rear yard setbacks being 13.7 and 10.3 feet respectively where 20 is required. There is a mixed-use building in the southwest quadrant of the lot, I didn't really know how else to describe it, so I broke the side into quadrants. The southwest quadrant, which contains a first-floor restaurant and three two-bedroom apartments above, which is the subject of that prior special permit. And this building is non-conforming to side yard setback being 16.4 feet where 20 is required. And then currently there is a single-family dwelling and a detached garage in the northwest quadrant of the lot. That building is non-conforming to the side yard setback being 7.4 feet where 10 is required. The application before you tonight really deals with the single-family dwelling and garage, but of course applies to the lot as a whole. The applicants have proposed to raise and remove the existing single-family dwelling and garage, and in their place to construct six two-bedroom units of multifamily housing to be located in three duplexes. This will require a special permit under 240 10.2A, which is formerly 243C, for change to non-conforming structures, as well as a special permit under 246.2, which is formerly 240 51A5, which allows for multifamily use in the business-two zoning district. This plan has been before the planning board and has received site plan review approval. I don't think it's any secret that we have a bit of a housing crisis in town. We need more housing, really of any type, but specifically, our housing production plan has talked about one and two bedroom units. And I think in situations where there can be infill of existing developments like this, it's probably the best, easiest, and most cost-effective way of developing additional housing. The result of this proposal is six new units and three duplexes for a total of six units of multifamily housing on the site. At six units per acre, that's 7,260 square feet per unit, and this site would allow for 10.95 units, so 10 is within the allowed amount. The ridge height of the duplexes will be 22 feet 10 inches, which is well below the 35 feet allowed. The lot coverage by structures will be only 20.08%, which is about half of the 40% allowed. And the lot coverage by structures paving and parking will be 68.13%, which is below the 70% allowed. Under 240 10.2A, pre-existing non-conforming structures can be changed, provided the board finds that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240 12.1E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. The applicant's proposal eliminates an existing non-conforming side yard setback to the dwelling, and there's no impact on the remaining nonconformities. The proposed duplexes will meet side and rear yard setbacks, there's no impairment of views and vistas, and this being a business-two zoning district, it is keeping with the surrounding properties and neighborhood. Under 246.2, for multifamily housing up to six units per acre, the board is asked to determine if the public good will be served, whether or not the business-zoned areas will be adversely affected, and whether or not the permitted uses in the district are noxious to multifamily housing, and to ensure that the density of the approved proposal will not exceed six per acre. Here, I believe the public good is served, we're adding sorely needed housing stock. Though this is not proposed to be restricted as affordable, the expectation is that the rent will hew fairly closely to the affordable range. And the applicant intends to retain these properties as rental units. This will revitalize an underutilized, highly visible portion of the lot with an attractive functional use. The business-zoned area will not be adversely affected. This site, as existing and as proposed, will include both business and residential uses in an area that promotes exactly that. And the permitted uses in the district are not noxious to multifamily housing. The applicants also proposed additional parking, an additional 12 parking spaces to accommodate the new residential units. Even without the additional parking spaces being added, this site has enough parking spots to accommodate this, there is a bit of a surplus of parking. But the proposed changes improve the existing parking configurations as well as the traffic flow. I believe that this proposal meets the criteria of 240 10.2A, 246.2, and 240 12.1E. Further, I think that we should be doing whatever we can to promote responsible development, especially when we're able to infill in existing, already developed parcels. For all these reasons, I would ask that this board grant a special permit and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you Attorney Clower. Scott Peterson, any questions?
Attorney Clower, just clarification. In the application, you described briefly the project will have 10 units, and in the planning board's findings, it said six new units plus the current three for a total of nine, so just a clarification.
I think that's the typo in the planning board's site plan review, but I can make sure that's addressed with the planning office. We did speak pretty often about the fact that there were four existing units on the site, so.
And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks Scott. Bob?
Just for clarification, so there were four lots merged to the one?
Mm-hmm.
Was there any consideration, I know that rents will probably be affordable anyways, of the possibility of restricting one so the town can use it towards their inventory?
I mean, there's been some discussion of it, but the process for restricting a unit is pretty cumbersome, and they prefer not to go through that process without having the actual requirement for doing so, but believe that by keeping the rates close to that, it still achieves a pretty positive outcome.
That's the only question I have. Scott?
You know I don't.
It's a Presby system.
Pardon me?
It's a Presby system, and we're adding nine additional Presby pipes.
You want me to get into it?
No, no I don't. But I studied that today. I studied that today.
Thank you, Ms. James.
You know the pros and cons of Presby?
I don't. It's an IA system, we like them.
Basement access is through exterior bulkhead?
Yes, and they're not intended for the tenant usage.
And according to the plans, it's just going to be one common basement for each duplex? Is there going to be access granted by way of an easement, or how's that going to work? Let me just say, don't worry, I'm in support of the project.
Sure, I don't, I mean, it's not going to be an easement because they're going to be retained as rentals, so it's all going to be in the common ownership.
And the parking areas, are they going to be marked off exclusively for residents, or how is that going to work?
I think, you know, that area really lends itself to the residential parking, it's pretty far away from most of the commercial uses. So if needed, we could certainly comment on them being intended for the residential units, but I don't think it's necessary in this case, but we probably could have if we had to.
Just to stay on the record, it is very nice to see that development like this that's in compliance with the housing production plan, it's not often enough, so, thank you.
Thanks, James. Jerry?
No comments, I think everybody has said what I would have said.
All right, and just to piggyback off of James's comments about the parking, just confirming, it looks like a curb cut coming off of Old Meeting House Road, and then it's tying into the existing parking lot on site?
Yep, so if you look at, this is the existing conditions plan, and there is a curb cut on Old Meeting House Road, but there's no access from this area to the rest of the site. So what we're proposing is an improvement to that curb cut, and that's going to tie in with the parking on the rest of the site. So when I said it's going to improve the current parking configuration and the traffic flow, that's what I was referring to. Because now you've got an ability to get cars from this area further away from the intersection rather than coming out at this curb cut, which is pretty close to that intersection.
All right, thanks for the clarification. Any other questions from the board?
I'd say one more. The landscape plan, those are all mature bushes and islands are going to be grassed.
Yep, so we actually included, I didn't submit this part of your application, but I certainly can, just trying to show, give an idea of what the green space is going to look like. And what we're doing is really maintaining a lot of the existing green space and improving the curb areas as they exist today.
Oh nice, thank you. Thank you, Ms. James.
Thank you. All right, public comment. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Not seeing any. Back to the board.
Push to close.
Second.
Back to the board, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes warmly, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken.
Motion approved with conditions?
Second.
Motion approved with conditions, again made by Bob and second by James. Findings?
240 10.2A, 246.2, 240 12.1E, property is multi-use in a B2 zoning district. The lot coverage will be 20.08% by structure and 68.13% structure parking and paving, which is under the 70% that's allowed. There won't be any nonconformities setbacks. The applicant is proposing three duplexes with six rental units in the three duplexes. They are one-to-two bedroom units, which is in performance with the town's housing production plan, even though the units will not be restricted as affordable, in all likelihood the rents will be affordable. I think they'll be raising the single-family home with the garage and replacing it with the duplexes. They're allowed to have, they're going to be doing six units per acre.
All right, anything else for findings?
Proposed IA system, Presby.
Just put, yeah, just.
Yeah, okay, that's true.
Put as a finding that a copy of the plan was forwarded to the District Five Permits Engineer, in case there was any permission needed from Mass DOT from the East Falmouth Highway, which is a state right of way. Put a finding that they will need a driveway permit from the engineering division.
Does Presby require monitoring contract?
I don't believe so.
What a health problem. Right, that'll be unacceptable.
But we can notate the system. Also put a finding that the original parcel was four lots, they've been merged into one, which is a requirement for the six units per acre.
Clarification for the planning board?
Yeah, we'll put that in the, we'll actually put that in the attached documentation.
Did we mention a previous special permit for the property too?
Yeah, you might as well say that, you know, previously they had the other special permit which added residential units over the Bite to Go building.
Is there some language for that clarification? That was a typo?
On the.
That was described by Attorney Clower?
Oh, on the ten, yeah, we actually just took it out.
Okay.
No opposition offered to figure?
No opposition. You can also make a notation that they are improving the traffic flow in the lot.
All right, anything else for findings? Conditions?
Sorry, we have planning board, the site plan is approved by the planning board.
That we notated that.
Thank you.
So, conditions, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Condition upon subsection 991, a fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. Also, construction of the project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control Put a note that the existing service to 15 Old Meeting House Road must be cut and shut off at the main. The new units must have one service per unit, so it will require six and not three connections. And it says, just from the water, three at the two-inch taps feeding one-inch services may meet town water standards, but if there's any change to the plans, they must be reviewed further by the Falmouth Water Department for approval. Also conditioned that the existing services to the other buildings on the site must be marked, protected, and not damaged during construction, so there is continuous water service throughout the proposed work. You know, put as a finding on the septic that the proposal is to expand the recently installed septic system, Leach Field, serving unit three, and that was acceptable as long as all structures are served by the septic or on the same lot. The testimony, the lots were merged to all be on one lot. Also put as a finding that the proposed roofs will be connected to leaching pits for infiltration. The normal work hours you use. All materials and construction equipment must be kept on site. Also do the notation on there that if they need any kind of traffic control, that they arrange that through the police department.
They could come into the backside of the restaurant to do that work.
Yeah, but just in case if they need it, they just, they'll know they'll have to make Noreen, was there anything on the previous special permit that we would have to notate with this? You did make an.
Do you want anything about the basements, there are only access to the bulkhead? So then, I guess you don't need to put any condition on the basement.
And we do have the finding on the four lots, you'll need to know that anyways we're referenced, because the last permits, there were still four lots. Also notate the ridge heights.
Did that assert it framing?
I don't know if we need it at that height.
No, they're only at what, 21?
22 or 22s?
22, I don't think we need it.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I think that's it.
All right, so that was motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes warmly.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Good luck. Yes, sir.
All right, up next we have application 33-22.
You see, you don't want to take a break?
Yeah, do we?
No, push on. Push on. Isn't this usually our break time?
Somebody's record, it ruins what's going on.
33-22, Eskadarian, 11 Tonset Road, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to
allow renovations to include the removal of a portion of the existing garage, remove existing deck, and construct additions. Oh, Jerry, you'll be a voting member on this one?
So application number 33-22, Edward and Nancy R., Eskadarian, 18125 Southeast Village Circle, Jupiter, Florida, have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240, 11.34, and 240 10.2A of the Code of Falmouth, to allow renovations to include the removal of a portion of the existing garage, remove the existing deck, and construct additions. The subject property is 11 Tonset Road, North Falmouth, Mass. For referrals, we do have an order of conditions from the conservation department. Conservation Commission held a hearing under notice of intent which was closed on April 6, 2022, and that's what that order conditions refers to. From engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Tonset Road is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. Where this project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the commission for any stormwater management and construction and erosion controls. From the health department, it's assessed as a four-bedroom with a four-bedroom septic system. All right, it's got a permit number circa 2003. Plan shows four bedrooms. Note, the second floor sitting room appears to be connected to a hallway and a staircase, which does not afford privacy. The second floor office appears to be open to the great room. The crawl created nearest the leaching only requires 10 feet if the dust cap elevation at the base of the crawl is above the elevation of the leaching, otherwise a 20-foot setback is required. From water, it is served by town water, and the service does meet town standards, so no further comment needed. No comment from assessors, no comment from planning. No, and no additional letters with comments, concerns, support, or opposition. When there is a lot coverage, bulk calculation was submitted, as well as a FEMA worksheet that shows that it's within the amounts required. As well as a FEMA worksheet that shows that it's within the amounts required.
Okay. Anything for the applicant?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Zach Masinski, professional engineer, Bracken Engineering. We're a local engineering firm out of Bourndale. I am here this evening on behalf of Ed and Nancy Eskadarian, the current property owners of Eleven Tonset. As mentioned, we're here under sections twenty, two forty dash eleven point three, subsection four, and two forty dash ten point two A to modify a single-family home in order to maintain the previously increased lot coverage on the property. Again, property sits within a RB zoning district. It's an eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square foot lot, West Falmouth, just south of South Wild Harbor. The existing house was built in nineteen twenty-nine per assessor's records and predates FEMA requirements. Under existing conditions, the lot would be afforded twenty-two hundred and ninety-six square feet by right. Back in two thousand and three, the previous homeowners were granted a special permit at that time for an increased lot coverage, bringing the lot coverage up to twenty-four point seven percent on the property. So the application in front of you tonight is to maintain that twenty-four point seven percent lot coverage on the property by removing a portion of the existing garage area on the back and then infilling a portion of behind the existing house, maintaining it as a four-bedroom septic on the property. As mentioned, project has been through, the Conservation Commission was issued a order of conditions for the property. Again, this does sit within a FEMA flood zone, and an appraisal was done on the house, bringing it in at one point five million with also a certified contractor's costs showing that we are less than fifty percent of the assessed, oh, sorry, the appraised value of the structure, therefore meeting the FEMA requirements for not a substantial improvement on the project. We believe this project can be approved as it's in harmony with the neighborhood. We're maintaining the previously-approved lot coverage, or structure coverage on the lot. The structure coverage and additional purview coverage is still less than forty percent, coming in at twenty-eight point nine percent on the lot. Again, the proposed additions maintain all the existing views from the parcels behind us. We're infilling behind an existing structure on the lot, therefore not impeding on them. Structure height comes in at twenty-two point six feet, less than the thirty-five allowed by right on the property. No changes in use of the property, maintained as a single-family house, no impacts on utilities to the property, and traffic and pedestrian flow is maintained. So with that, we believe that the project is also, again, being maintained in harmony with the neighborhood and could be approved under the local bylaw. And with that, I'll turn it back over.
That's good. Thank you. All right, board questions? Jerry, anything?
No. Clarifying question, I'm assuming. Are you in compliance with the requirement from the Board of Health?
Yes.
Let's cover elevation and the leaching field.
Yes, we maintain that ten foot, and we have a crawl space on that side.
All right. James?
No questions. Thank you.
Scott?
None for me, thank you.
Bob?
No questions.
Scott?
Seeing unanimous, no questions.
Nothing? Yeah, nothing for me either. All right. Well-presented project, I'll say. Public comment? Any questions, comments, or concern? Richard?
Richard?
Come up with something.
Richard doesn't...
Richard likes it.
All right, so back to the board.
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion closed made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Motion approved with conditions?
Second.
Motion approved with conditions made by Bob, second by James. Findings?
So two forty eleven point three-four, two forty ten point, let's see, ten point two?
Ten point two.
Ten point two A?
Yep.
Two forty twelve point one E, not substantially more detrimental. Property's in a residential B district, just south of Wild Harbor. The original house in nineteen twenty-nine predates the FEMA regulations. There's a previous special permit from the planning board that showed a lot coverage increase to twenty-four point seven. Just make a note that at that time, the planning board was the one that did special permits for increasing lot coverage. Concom has an order of conditions in the file. The project complies with town water standards from the Falmouth Water Department. There's a FEMA worksheet that was submitted, and the improvement threshold is under the fifty percent that would have been required for FEMA regulations. Proposed ridge height is twenty-two point six. Property is a four-bedroom, remaining a four. And then notate that... On the four bedrooms, notate that the second-floor sitting room appears to be connected to a hallway and staircase and doesn't afford privacy, and the second-floor office appears to be open to the great room. Testimony is that the, did you, that the dustcap elevation at the base of the crawl is above the elevation of the leaching, so the crawl that's created does allow a ten-foot setback versus twenty feet. The property is served by town water. Engineering suggests that where there's an order of conditions from Concom, that they relate to them for any soil erosion and sediment controls required. Bulk calculation was submitted at twenty-four point seven. It's well within the range of the neighborhood. That's all I got.
All right. Conditions?
So per plans, on the four bedrooms, I just put a condition that the second-floor sitting room must continue to be connected to a hallway and/or staircase so that it does not afford privacy. And the second-floor office space must maintain a four-foot cased opening, so they can comply with the four-bedroom septic system that was installed in two thousand and three. Irene, on the soil erosion, what do we just defer to Conservation? We'll just make it subject to soil erosion and sediment control standards per Conservation?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, per Concom.
I think we have to make sure that they're being consistent.
Work hours, all materials and vehicles kept on site. Also, so put in the, put in the findings that the property is within a VE nineteen flood zone. Also add in there that they will, the renovations will include the removal of a portion of the existing garage and the removal of the existing deck and the construction of the additions. I think that's it.
All right. Anything else? Anyone? All right, so that was motion approved with conditions made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight.
He beat me.
Moving on to the open meeting items, we have voting the minutes of April twenty-first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, May fifth, twenty twenty-two, and May twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
We have just April twenty-first.
So just, we're just doing the April twenty-first?
Yes.
So then motion to set the minute for April twenty-first, then table the others.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve April twenty-first, table the others made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you abstaining?
Oh, okay. And Jerry's abstaining?
I was, yes.
I can think of one big update.
Yes.
Yeah.
Congratulations to our vice chair on recent election.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sad to see you go, but...
Well, it's a little, it's a little bittersweet. I mean, I love, I love the zoning board, and you guys know that it's part of what helped me make my decision to run for the select board. But trust me when I tell you, I'll be looking in.
I hope that you will be.
Yeah.
And you'll serve the town well in your new position.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Rob.
Anything else for board updates? Board discussion?
I would like to discuss it. It's only ten past seven.
So noted. All right, future agenda items. All right, our next meeting is June ninth, twenty twenty-two, six-thirty here at Town Hall. Meeting adjourned.